Good evening, everybody. It is 6:01 PM. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom and I'm calling this meeting of the Policy Committee to order. I apologize, I don't have my regular note-taking thing, so I'm going to be writing on this piece of paper as we go. So, sorry Tara. All right, so we have Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Thank you. We have Ms. Lampier.
Here.
We have Mr. Castellano.
Here.
And we have Mr. Poska.
Good evening.
And Heather Raymond. 6:02 PM. Okay. So, you'll notice in your packets that we sent out last time's agenda. And I know that that's weird. And the reason, well, there's a couple of reasons. One, we didn't have a robust agenda ready, partly because we have a lot of irons in the fire that are still being worked on by administrative teams and steering committees. And then the other thing is, we like to take a selection of ones that are out of date and then compare it to the New Hampshire School Boards Association sample policies and then update to make sure we're in compliance with the law. But the New Hampshire School Board Association's policy directory has been down. I think there was a cyber attack, I'm not sure, but they lost the whole thing. It's been three weeks, they haven't gotten it back up yet. So, what I thought we would do was, I handed out Policy BDEA, which is the Policy Committee policy. And like all of the other committees are doing, this is due to update. So, HR took a look at theirs and really expanded on it. Curriculum and Finance also have their policies of their policy, I'm sorry, policies of their committee. So, I thought we could make this a work session to have a little bit of conversation about it. I also wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update of the other kind of stuff that's coming up. So, would anyone like the update first or the working first?
The update, sounds good.
Okay. Sorry, I feel uncollaborative this evening. So, at our last main board meeting, we had a comment from a teacher at the middle school level with some concerns about Policy IKE and IKER, which were the grade promotion, retention, and acceleration of students. And then, Mr. Poska and I had a meeting with Dr. Sarfati on Friday, and she has some language changes that she would like to see in that one, too. And so, I owe this committee and the board an apology. I should have run it by Dr. Sarfati in the first place. And I think, at the time, I was thinking, we're just changing the middle and high schools, so it didn't occur to me to run it by her. But once she read it, she was like, "Oh, hey, the elementary school part is problematic, so we need to make some changes." So, we had some really good conversations on Friday. She wants to add in some language regarding evidence-based assessments, which I think is critical, and I totally, I was like, "Oh, yeah, that's obvious, we should have done that." And then she wants to change some of the other language, like, we have some archaic language in there, like academic achievement. Really, what we needed to say is proficiency of grade level standards, because all of the other discussions that teachers are having with students and with each other and all the discussions at curriculum are regarding proficiency as compared to grade level standards. And for anybody who just watched the Curriculum Committee meeting, they were talking about testing and some of the test scores coming out where students were behind on proficiency in reading at the beginning of the year, and then they've been using Zern. And like, Bertrell, for example, had 18% of their students proficiency at grade level standards, and now they're up to, I forget, 44%. So, they've had this huge jump of kids who are really overcoming some of those COVID deficits as a result of this new programming. So, we want our policies about grade promotion, retention, and acceleration to reflect the language that matches with the curriculum and the way that we're evaluating students.
Okay.
I just couldn't get all of that in there after a 1:30 meeting to be distributed to the board, you know, in time. So, that will be coming back. What else did we talk about? She had a lot of, she had a lot of really good feedback. The other thing she was talking about was, you know, so not just talking about if we need to retain a student and when that might be appropriate and when it's not appropriate, but also, we have a lot of families who want their students accelerated. And so, she wants to have some evidence-based practices in that section as well, because that typically happens at a younger age, that parents are asking for acceleration. And so, she has some, like the SAS data, she has Eureka modules, there are data practices and assessments that we are using now to assess some of that stuff and that she's utilizing in her discussions with families and teachers that didn't exist back when the policy was first written.
Okay.
So, all of that is to say that that will be coming up soon. I don't know if it will be May or June. I was talking to Mr. Hoffman, the teacher from the middle school level today, because the middle school leveling policy is something that is being reviewed right now by the middle school steering committee, which is made up of teachers and administrators and experts in middle school. And so, when they give their feedback to Mr. Poska and to this committee on that policy, maybe that's a natural time to get the language appropriate for IKE, to make sure we don't have any further, what's the word I'm looking for, further discontinuity.
Yeah, and I think to that point with, with the middle school policy, there's many aspects of that policy that need to be reviewed because so much of it is outdated. So, the middle school steering committee has made some, has done some work to one piece of that part of the policy, but I think there's several other parts of the policy that also need to be reviewed and we need to make sure that it's still in line with what we want to do or where we want it, or if that's the practice we want in place going forward.
The other requests that we had were regarding, at the last full board meeting, we had a request from Ms. Oden and Ms. Johnson regarding getting the costing sheets for our contracts with our various unions, three days in advance. And so, Mr. Poska and I and Mr. Donovan sat down with our policies and looked at where that might go. And so, Mr. Donovan is looking at Policy DHA regarding contract signing authority, and then it talks about the Business Operations Manual, so he's going to pull out the Business Operations Manual and see, right, and see if it's in there, because really, that's the appropriate place for it. So, what I've done is delegated a lot, and not brought you guys a lot, and I'm sorry for that. And then the other policy that we have, two other policies that we have kind of in the pipeline for the next few months are JLCF, which is our wellness policy, and that's the one that talks about caffeine and snacks and all sorts of stuff for what kinds of beverages and foods kids can have in school and that the school can be serving. But it also falls in line with the requests from the Nashua North Student Senate regarding creating a coffee bar. And so, that is right now with food services, because there are some grant changes. And so, we've talked to the students at North, we've had a couple of meetings, we've had meetings with the principals, and now it's in with food services to make sure that the updates match the new grant requirements. So, everything that I have on my list just seems to be complicated this month.
So, yes, I did follow up Ms. Dagel today. So, the small committee that we have working to review Policy JLCF at the school level has made their recommendations, so we're ready to kind of review all these updates, put together a final, put together what we hope is our final draft, which will then have our stakeholders, mainly our principals, at both the secondary and elementary level review to make sure this is in fact what we want it to be, based upon the input we've got. So, once we have that, then we'll be able to bring it back here to have the discussion about the whole policy, which also entails the possibility of a coffee bar at the high school level.
Yeah, but I think the focus right now needs to be on grants.
Correct.
As much as I want teenagers to be able to have coffee, I mean, actually, I don't. I'm completely indifferent on the matter, but I want teenagers to, they've done such a good job researching and advocating for themselves, I would love for them to have this win. I really want us to be able to procure grant funds more than that. So, that's the most important part, so when that finishes. And then, Ms. Lampier had worked on ACE-R, and if you could give us, I made notes when we talked, but if you want to give us the update on where that is?
Sure. So, ACE-R is regarding the nondiscrimination policy and referring parents to the New Hampshire procedural safeguards, if they have any questions. So, I was kind of hoping that we could get the policy changed so that it would be, so that the procedural safeguards and the steps the parents would be taking if they have an issue with the school will be written in plain text right in the policy. And we could not do that, because that would mean that we would be parsing the meaning of the procedural safeguards. And then, the Parent Information Center is a great resource for parents, and I was hoping that maybe we could get one of their handouts that they had prepared and give it to the parents when they come for IEP meetings and stuff. But that would put the teachers in an unfair position, because there is a chance that if they forget to give the handout and it's in the policy, they could be penalized for that. So, so what we could agree to was adding the resources that are listed directly in the procedural safeguards as its own policy, ACE-R, is that, ACE-R, yes. So, we will, we will keep the, the intention is to keep the recommended by the State Board policy, that's very short and simple, in ACE, and then direct the parents to ACE-R, where they have a list of, I don't know, there's like, maybe five or six resources that they can call with the contact information, so that it's right there in the policy if they, if they need it. And that's what we were hoping to pass. Oh, and I also wanted to mention that we talked a bit about starting up a special education parent advisory group. There was one, apparently, it was called PACT, I guess, before COVID, but then with COVID, it kind of just died out, and the interim special ed director is hoping to get that up and running and have some, some real feedback from the parents in a real spirit of collaboration. So, that would really improve, you know, hopefully, that would really improve relationships and trust between the school district and the parents that might have issues. So, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so I think that gets us up to speed with where we were. And so, I brought and I handed out for everybody Policy BDEA. I just printed it from our website, so if anyone wants to go and see it, it's on the website. That is our Policy Committee policy. It's very short. I also emailed everyone just now, the policy that Dover uses, which is even older than ours, but I know that they got it from the School Board Association, which is why I chose that one. And that is called Board Policy Development. It has a different letter, so we'd have to talk to Tara about the lettering. But essentially, it talks about how the board, how their board decides on what policies to move forward. And it talks about, our Policy Committee policy says, "The committee will work closely with the superintendent and designees to develop policies and will review existing policies on a continuing basis." That's based on state law. The Dover one is interesting, because it says, it kind of gives you the intent behind it. It says, we, it defines what a policy is, based on the School Board Association, and it says, "Policies are principles adopted by the school board to chart a course of action." I kind of like that part. And then it talks about, like, what's the intent of having policies? And I didn't know if our board wanted to incorporate any of that, or if we wanted to just leave it as, "This is what we do."
I like the idea of incorporating this. I actually, it's funny, because I went the other day and took, I took pictures on my phone of some of the policies at different schools. So, I looked up Dover and Concord and a couple of other ones, and I liked this one, and it was different than all the others. And then, there was one, I'm not sure which city or town it was, where they mentioned the specific role of the chair in making, in meeting with the administration and getting the policy set up, and I think I'd like to include that as well.
I don't remember which.
I haven't, I took a picture, so, hold on, let me look.
Can you email the picture to us?
Oh, sure.
I love all of us having our own little devices now. It's so much better than it was a few years ago.
Okay, this one is, I, I think it's from the Exeter Cooperative School District, or one of the smaller schools as part of that, but I can definitely, if you guys are interested in this, I can find out the school and get it to you as well.
I just would like to look at the language. So, I thought today we could talk about, like, literally diving in and having that kind of open discussion about what we do and how to incorporate the language. And I made Mr. Claffey stay for it, so, Mr. Claffey, do you have thoughts?
Thank you. I was just looking at the other, trying to figure out what other policies apply to different committees, and I was trying to see whether there's language, for example, under curriculum that says, the curriculum, the committee I just sat in on, every four years, they're going to revise, you know what I mean? Like, other, do other committees have this specific obligation to do their job every four years, or do they have to continually review? I just thought, maybe it's not necessary.
So, I know that that's in there, only because I was on the board back in 2018, the last time this was reviewed, because it's part of Ed 302. So, probably, we should have a legal reference for it. But that's, that's what the law says that we're obligated to do. Not that we've been really great about, we make a sincere effort, but we haven't been particularly successful.
So, does it say we're obligated to conduct a complete review every four years?
No, I think the language is, I'll look it up. We are responsible for, so curriculum should have something that says that they're responsible for the development and educational plan, including curriculum instruction and assessment. And then, HR should probably have one that says, "Responsible for the evaluation of person, for, yeah, evaluation of personal and program, programs." It just says, "Be responsible for the implementation and review of school district policies." So, do you want to strike the four years?
I just thought there might be a time where the board is overwhelmed with other pressing business, and people might not be able to fulfill that obligation.
We have not fulfilled it in any time in the last 30 years. I will say, because some of the ones that we've been reviewing over the last two years that I've been policy chair, from the late 80s.
And I think, if I may, I just looked up, I tried to find the legal definition of, quote, "on a continuing basis," unquote, end quote, and that means without interruption.
Yep.
So, if that's something the Policy Committee has been doing since you've been chair of this committee, if this is what you do, if you're always evaluating some policy, then maybe that's not a problem. That commitment to do it on a, maybe, ongoing basis would be a little more, a little less restrictive.
Mr. Castellano, you don't have your hand up, but do you have any thoughts?
No, not on this topic specifically. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had one real minor suggestion. If we keep the first, what do you call the numbered pieces there? Number one?
Yes.
If you keep that, replace his or her with their.
Yes, I agree.
Is that acceptable now for just about every, okay?
I like that very much.
It includes?
Gender neutral. Many other languages have a gender neutral, singular, I don't know why English doesn't. We used, actually, English used to, and then it got dropped, I don't know, hundreds of years ago. Okay, so, I'm looking at Exeter. Exeter says, "The Policy Committee will review policies on a continuing basis. They will evaluate how the policies have been executed by school staff. It will rely on the school staff, students, and the community for providing evidence of the effect of the policies, and recommended changes will be presented at the Policy Committee." And then, it says, "The superintendent is responsible for calling to the SAU Policy Committee's attention all policies that are out of date and need to revision." Or like, that they just like, throw that on someone else at the end.
I'm sure Dr. Andre would be, I'm sure Dr. Andre would be happy if he told them that he had to do that, as well as everything else.
Right. Well, I think that we have a well-oiled machine, kind of in the way that we partner between the chair and administration, which is good.
I really like the way that, you know, with the Right to Know Act and everything, it's important to have one designate to go in and work on a regular basis with, with the administration. So, I do think it is important to have that in the policy. And I like Mr. Claffey's, you know, taking out this, complete it every four years, just because the policies should reflect what is actually, like, reality and not just some pie-in-the-sky ideas.
Okay, so, we like number one in our list of two things. And we like that we'll review existing policies on a continuing basis, but not the complete review every four years, because that is not actually the state law anymore. Do we want to add in there the Dover part regarding the definition of policy?
Ms. Raymond, the Dover policy is similar to our own BG policy.
Oh, got it. Okay. Probably because we both got it from the State Board, the school.
Similar, I think, it just, policy gets broken out, you know, really, the definition of the Policy Committee, then BG, which is what you're referencing here with Dover, is about Board Policy Development. We have our own BG, which is Board Policy Process, somewhat similar to what they're denoting there.
What, what year is our, 1999?
It was last revised in 2004.
All right.
So.
Just the same age as the Dover School District one. So, let's pull BG as well.
So, I think if, Ms. Cancela in the packet that she'd sent out for the March meeting, so I think the following policies do have some type of connection to policies, so it would be Policy BG, Policy BGA, Policy BGAA, Policy BGB, Policy BGC, Policy BGE, and Policy BGF. All have connections to the Policy Committee.
Well, that's fun.
I, it appears, and I think, I had some notes prior to NHSBA going offline, that some of those, some of those BG policies that we just referenced are recommended, they're not required.
Right.
So, it's a matter of the direction we want to go.
I'm going to pull all those up right now, so we can look at them. So, we only have, of that list, we currently only have BGD and BGF, right? And BG, and we both, we looked at both of those recently.
Do we, do we, do we have BG?
No. We don't have, we don't, we haven't adopted that one here. That must be from the School Boards Association.
I don't see, yeah, most of those, I don't, I'm looking online at ours, and I didn't see most of those.
Yep.
So, to your point, we have not adopted BG.
Let's see if I can open another 800th tab here. So, what are all these other ones? BGA. Okay, so BGAA.
Policy Development Adoption Review.
Cursage has it. So, Cursage School District's BGA says, "Endorses for use in this district, the policy development, the codification, and dissemination system of the New Hampshire School Boards Association." So, I'm going to guess that we don't have this policy here in New Hampshire, in Nashua, because there was quite a bit of opposition to us being part of the School Boards Association for about 10 years before I came on the board. It's, it costs like $10,000 a year to be part of it. You get their legal advice, you get trainings from them, and you get access to all of their policies, and they can review your policies. And just, I talked to, during COVID, I talked to the two attorneys up there, I don't know, maybe three times a month, every month. Since then, I talk to them every couple of months. I know Tara talks to them, Ms. Cancela in the office talks to them a lot, Ms. Bishop utilizes their services a lot. So, in my opinion, the $10,000 is worth the money, but I think there was a significant period of time where Nashua didn't want to. So, I can see us not wanting to necessarily have Policy BGA that says, "We're going to use the New Hampshire School Board Association system," even though we do, because we still use their letters.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be a good, if we want to make sure that we continue our relationship with the School Board Association, would it be better to put it into policy? Because that way, if new board members come on and they are, they are against the School Board Association, and they don't, they don't like spending that money, it would be more difficult for them to, you know, break that relationship? I mean, because I think it, it seems like, if you're going to do policy, it should be written in proper language and it should be done correctly. And, you know, some of the policies we've looked at, they, you know, they're not, they're not really appropriately written.
I agree. And I think you can tell the difference between the ones that were written by the attorneys at the School Board Association versus the ones that were written by the laypeople who are elected to be on the board. None of us are lawyers right now. So, this one is the one that says, "A member of the SAU staff is to be designated and delegated by the superintendent with the responsibility to maintain the board's policy reference pile, files, to draft proposals as instructed by the board, and maintain the Board Policy Manual, serve as liaison." I kind of like that one. So, that's BGA.
Would that currently be Ms. Cancela that does all that?
So, right now, it is Mr. Poska, right?
Oh, wow.
That's under your?
Yes, policy, yes.
Job duties. We just like to announce to Mr. Poska new IDMs, new things. Hey, guess what you're doing now? No, I'm kidding. So, New Hampshire School. Policy, BGB, so BGB. So, we liked Dover's, which was BG, to pull and look at next month, or in the near future. We liked BGA, which is the one we just said, and then, BGB. I don't see a BGB. Oh, BGB is Policy Adoption. And that says that, ah, "Except for this, except for policy actions to be taken on emergency measures, the adoption of board policies should follow this sequence: announcement and publication of newer revised policies; opportunity offered to concerned groups or individuals to react to policy proposals; discussion and final action; the final vote should not take place until the second board meeting following the first," oh, that's a lot, "following the first reading; prior to enactment, they must be titled and coded, limited to one subject." We have some of these things in our, our board meeting policy. Because our board meeting policy specifically says that you cannot change policies, you can't introduce a policy for change at a full board meeting unless it's on an emergency basis.
Yeah, it seems like this could make it more difficult to get policy passed. And we do have public comment period at full board meetings, and people have the opportunity to speak at those. But to, this language of offering the opportunity offered to concerned groups might, you know, might become complicated.
Yep. So it says that, yeah, this one also says that there's a three-week limitation, like you have to, you can't, you have to give it three weeks before you bring it up and then vote on it. All right, so this is a, probably not, but maybe. Do you guys have any thoughts over there? No? Okay. Shout it out, because I'm looking at my screen. I'm interested to see, as I Google it, which school boards have it and which don't. So Cursage says they have it. Okay, so BGC is Policy Review and Evaluation. Again, it's not legally required, it just says that the board will evaluate how policies have been executed by the school staff, weigh the results, will rely on school staff, students, and communities providing evidence. Oh, yeah, we talked about this one a minute ago. All right, and then we have BGE and BGF already, and recently updated.
I think that the, the things that are useful in BGC, we could maybe add to BGE rather than having another policy, because some of this is, some of this is good, about how the board will evaluate the policies, how they've been executed by the school staff and weigh the results. But then the, then following paragraph is the superintendent has given the continuing responsibility of calling to the board's attention all policies that are out of date or appear to need revision for other reasons.
We already have that built into our process.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't, I feel like BGC might not be one that we want to add.
Okay, I agree with you. Does anyone feel differently? No? Okay. So it sounds like we want to look at, not BGB, we didn't like that one, BGA, the Policy Development System.
Yeah.
And BG, which is that Dover one, but it's very similar to ours, right? Or maybe we don't have it? No, we didn't have that one. And BG, which is the Dover policy I emailed everybody and have now lost. There it is.
Could I read you the language in the, in the, in the policy that I found?
Yes, do you know where it's from yet?
I don't know, I believe it's from Exeter, but I'm not exactly sure, but I will find out, but it's, it's Policy BGAA.
Oh, I didn't see that one, okay.
What it says, what I was particularly interested in, is there is a paragraph that says, "Policy Committee Meetings and Agenda." And it said, "The superintendent or their designee, in consultation with the Policy Committee Chair, shall prepare all agenda for the meetings of the Policy Committee." Like, the superintendent or his designee, that would be Mr. Poska, and then it would make it clear that it was the Policy Committee Chair that's responsible for that.
I like that, that's good. Do we not have that one? Oh, we do. No, we don't. We have it under, under just the regular agenda. Okay, that's why I'm getting confused, I'm sorry.
Does it, does it include the language about the Chair, or?
I'm sorry, so we have the language about the Chair setting the agendas, but under our regular board meeting, not for the Chair of various boards. Okay, so BGAA as well. So I have written down that we want to pull out and bring to the next meeting BG, BGA, And this policy, BGAA, it's really interesting, I just found it, Raymond just adopted it in 2022. And we may find that, that this, this talks about everything that we have in our policy BDEA, and like really expands it. So this one, this policy BGAA talks about the responsibilities in meetings, the agendas, the review of the existing manual, which is pretty much all we have right now in our entire policy here, and then procedures for how we do the policy development and review. It looks like it's almost like a global policy that would take all those other ones and put it in one, which might be convenient, because we don't necessarily need five different policies that say the same thing. Thoughts, gentlemen across the way? No? Okay. Okay. Is there anything else that folks wanted me to add to the queue or bring to my attention for future meetings?
I haven't looked into anything, but I will do that for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any other hot-button topics that need to be covered? Mr. Castellano?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, this past Saturday, I went to, like, it was basically a meeting for different student reps across the state, and there are a few superintendents there, as well as like the New Hampshire School Board Association, a couple of their attorneys, I think, or, or one of the attorneys. And, yeah, it was cool. One thing I learned that, that I just found was interesting was, in one district, I forget which district it was, but they actually, they allow, like, and I'm not even sure if this is policy-wise, but they allow students to have, like, student reps to have a vote, but it won't like count towards their vote, they just like have it to document what they think on the issue. And I just, Warren and I both thought that was a pretty good idea, so just wanted to bring that up.
That's interesting. What district was that?
I forget, honestly. I could probably ask Warren if he remembers, but it may have been Wyndham, but I'm honestly not sure. It's either Wyndham, Bo, or one or the other. There weren't many districts there.
All right. I like the idea of symbolic voting. And we do have a policy regarding student board members.
Yeah, I was just looking at that action.
Do, what's the, what's the letter off the top of your head? Because I'd have to go vote again.
Hold on, I was just, let me see. It's BBBF.
Three Bs?
Yep. And it's, yeah, student members on the Board of Education.
When was the last time we looked at that one?
It says, yeah.
So we should pull that one up, too.
I like that idea, since you guys are sitting here listening, and I know that a lot of times you have strong feelings, so it would be really great if you could cast a vote.
Yeah, and I mean, obviously, it wouldn't count towards the actual vote, but like, just, yeah, like you said, symbolic.
So, did you learn anything else about, like, how different districts operate, or? Let me think, interesting that?
What I found, well, one thing I found interesting was Wyndham, they have one high school, but they have three representatives, I just thought that was kind of funny, but...
That is interesting.
Because like, the way they do it, I guess, they like split it up amongst like the, yeah, or as well, like the elementary schools or middle schools, just like each one of them, they basically like talk about things happening at those levels, whereas Warren and I, we kind of just stick to the high school stuff.
Right. So the reps in Wyndham are all high school students, but they, like, their constituency is maybe elementary and middle and high?
Kind of, I just know they, I don't know if that's how it was intended to be, but they said like different, or like, they each basically cover a certain school, or agree to talk about a certain school at the board meeting. And they also do it because like they know that not all of them can always make it to the board meetings. Theirs are bi-weekly, so they're a bit more frequent, still twice, or, I don't know exactly how that works. But another thing, actually, I talked to Dr. Andre last week about the, just, I was wondering if there's a policy on like summative assessments, I know, and like how you can recover them in high school, because I know like at North, you can recover up to some, I think, I think Warren said an A+, actually, but, and then at South, technically, it's a B-, but it's also like, different teachers have different discretion on that, so I was just...
So it's interesting that you have asked that, because as a parent of a high schooler, one of the things that drives me absolutely insane is the fact that different teachers are allowed to make different rules about recovery. So I know my own kid had a teacher that would not let you recover if you got a B or above, right? So if you got a B-, you got to be minus, but if you got a C+, you could recover and maybe end up getting a better. And then he had another teacher that allowed recovery, but only up to a certain point. So if you, say you failed the test, and then you got an A on it the second time, you did not get an A. You could only get up to a C+ or a B- or something. And I was like, is there no rule? Doesn't make sense.
Right.
And he was like, "Don't get involved, Mom." And so I sat quietly and didn't get involved.
Yeah.
Mr. Claffey, who was a teacher?
Would this be curriculum and instruction?
Maybe. I don't know if it's a policy or not. I don't think it's a policy.
I think it might be curriculum and instruction, something we would bring to Mr. Poska's attention at the high school level, who would then talk to principals, who would then talk to head teachers.
Yeah, agreed. I think even if there was a policy about it, it would need to go to...
I think it would be.
And honestly, I think it needs to be, like, this is one of those, I just wanted to point out how irritated I was as a mom, and I wasn't...
Yeah.
Not that I wasn't allowed, I try and respect the agency of my kids as they get into middle and high school to manage some of these things on their own, which, as a parent, is really hard, and I didn't respect how hard that was going to be, coming into it. So anyways, even if there is, even if we do have a policy about recovery, I think it would need to go, it would need to start with Mr. Poska, and then Mr. Burns and Mr. Richard, and then they could bring it, like, I'm doing a lot of delegating this year, where I just don't, I don't like this idea of the board of, it's good for us to review and approve things, but I want the opinion of the experts in the field before we start messing with things. And I didn't get it last time, and now look at all the mess we've made, so I've learned my lesson significantly, and now I want to make sure that we do all that background work first. Mr. Poska, did you see anything?
No, I'm just looking at instruction right now, I can't see anything really about credit recovery, anything like that, so still digging.
Right. The only thing I can think of is the competency ILBAA and ILBAA-R, which is when we went to competency grading.
Yeah, and like, what I was talking about specifically, I guess, was like, just like summative exams and, or projects, that kind of stuff. I know there's kind of like, a whole different thing for like course recovery, or like post-course, in-course, that kind of stuff.
And I know that when we rolled out competency-based grading, the idea was to have some built-in review after a certain amount of time, and I am guilty of not paying enough attention to Curriculum Committee to know.
Yeah, just another example is, kind of like what you were sharing, Ms. Raymond, but in my, I mean, granted, it's an AP class I'm taking right now, AP Biology, but like, we're only, you can only recover the test if you get like below a C-, actually, so you have to like get an IP to be able to recover. And then, I mean, there's a whole process for that, but...
Right. Personally, I feel like, it's a, I think it's a, it is okay for the district to decide that this is our thing. If you get a C or minus, a C or below, you can recover. If you get a B, too bad, you're getting a B, teachers can't be regrading things all the time. I get that. I just want it to be consistent from class to class, or maybe it's one rule for honors classes and another rule for AP classes and another rule, like, I don't know, but it, I think it needs to be consistent, because I don't think it's fair to our students if, you know, you take a class with Mr. Claffey and somebody else takes a class with Mr. Jones, and it's the same class, but the way it's graded is different. You know what I mean? You should be able to switch. Mr. Claffey's like, "Shut up, Heather."
I mean, that's...
Reminiscent.
Are these conversations, that would happen quite a bit? Mr. Poska's nodding. This is why I'm not allowed to get involved, and I have to let my kid advocate for themselves.
To Mr. Castellano, but I will follow Mr. Burns and Mr. Richard, try to have and maybe, and probably pull you in, Dante, and we can have a conversation about where this information is clearly found, because it's not in the policy, so it might be in the high school handbook, more so than anything else.
Yep. So the only thing that we have for district-wide policy is the ILBAA-R, and it only talks about end of semester or end of year grade. So if it's a C- or better, you know what I mean, you've achieved your credit for the year. It doesn't say anything about how that applies to recovery, it just says, "You got to get a C-" in order to get credit for the class.
What is?
It's ILBA.
That's ILBAR.
A-A-R, yep. Because I did look it up when I was being told that I wasn't allowed to advocate for my kid. He's going to be so mad if he finds out I'm talking about him. All right. Anything else? I'm glad you brought that up, because now I have a list going for Mr. Poska. So we have a lot of exciting things coming up in the next couple months, just a lot of them had a lot of behind-the-scenes work and committee work. And by committees, I mean within district committees, like the Middle School Steering Committee is looking at leveling at the middle school level, and that's teachers, and I don't even, who else is on it? Teachers, administrators, special educators, guidance counselors involved in that, too? I don't even know.
They could be, but there are actually no guidance counselors on that committee, but we have about 23 members or so of varying staff positions at the middle school level across the district.
Yep. And so I know we looked at that particular policy about five years ago, and it didn't, at that time, the steering committees weren't meeting, and ended up dying at this, at the policy level, because those of us on Policy Committee were like, well, what do the teachers have to say? And it turns out that without having a committee for teachers to talk about it in a safe way, where they can argue and have conversations with each other, and, you know, off-the-cuff remarks, it was very difficult to get consensus. There are some discussions that, you know, professionals need to do in their professional learning environment and not in a public meeting.
Yes, of course.
So, so I'm super excited to see what they come up with, I just don't know how long that will take. But I think the idea is to have it be ready for when the new middle school opens, so we have a little bit of time. So, that's all I've got. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it, I guess.
Oh, Neil was already...
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned at 6:49 PM.